Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:03. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, would you do the invocation, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Father God, we thank you for another opportunity to come together to do the business of the city. We ask that you grace us with your presence, wise counsel, and your peace. I ask that you will bless us with unity, clarity, and productivity as we go through this charter amendment. Continue to bless us and all the participants and our families, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Council Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Councilwoman Erica Fareed.
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Councilman Hairston. Okay, Councilman Herring. Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, this, the agenda is hereby adopted. The only thing on the agenda today is the discussion of the the outputs from the Charter Review Committee. Those pieces, of those documents have been forwarded to council. And I will turn it over to the Chair of the committee, Councilwoman Fareed.
Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you, Council, for joining, as well as our attorney that's assisted us through the Charter Review process, Ms. Karen Ruff. Thank you for all of your diligence and patience as we work through this Charter Review process over the last couple of years. What we are presenting this evening is the culmination of the reviews that we have done. So basically, this is the final draft. There is nothing in here that is new, that we haven't discussed previously as a council. It is reflective of the consensus for the different areas that we have taken as we've embarked on this review. This Charter Review process was primarily focused on streamlining our government so that it would operate more efficiently and effectively, and that our Charter would be reflective of our actual operations. Because there were some discrepancies between what is said in the Charter and what common practice had come to be. So we endeavored to update the Charter for those purposes. We also updated the Charter to reflect any changes in referenced legislation so that it would be updated in accordance with current state laws and any other applicable laws. And so with that, I guess I will just see if the council has any questions on any particular areas. Like I said, Mrs. Ruff is here, so if this is your opportunity to ask her questions as, as well.
Are there any questions from council members?
Well, uh.
I did have, I don't know how late in the game this is. I know you guys worked on a lot, and I appreciate the work that the Charter Review Committee did to bring this forth. There is one addition that I would like to bring to the table for, for discussion. And, and that was, and I didn't see it here, I could have missed it, and that is the stipend that the elected officials receive. I think I briefly talked to Vice President Ferguson about it, just on one-on-one. But with the new structure of government, I was going to propose that the stipend be increased to $12,000 per member, with us having only now seven elected representatives instead of eight. That would not be, I mean, we will absorb the, the stipend from the eighth one, and it'll just be probably just a little bit more in the budget for the stipend. I do think that a lot goes on for elected officials. And though this is not a paying job, I think there are a lot of incidentals and things of that nature that these costs are incurred by council members, or, but they have to get babysitters or things like that. And I think that even the, the $12,000 year is low, but I think that it's, a sufficient increase, a minimal increase for elected officials. So I wanted to bring that forth as well. I don't know, I don't, I don't anticipate that being a huge lift. This Councilwoman Fareed or Ms. Ruff. If you, if it's, if you, if it is a big lift, let me know, but that's, that's the proposal I'm putting to add to these changes.
Council President, I guess I should know this, but what is the current stipend that the council members receive and the current stipend that the mayor receives?
I think the mayor, oh, I'll let Vice President Ferguson chime in. Vice President Ferguson?
I know, I think that was in '72, and the mayor, I, I'm thinking it was nine, ninety-two hundred, I mean, she is here. But also, I thought that, I mean, I'm thinking that, um, I don't know if that's in the Charter. I think that change would probably, if, introduce as a legislation, I think.
That, that is correct, Council Vice President. The Charter just simply states that there will be a payment made, and I don't even think it actually calls it a stipend. I think it might refer to it as a salary, but that, the amount is not specified in the Charter. What we did do, though, in this Charter is that because effectively, all of the elected officials are members of the council, even though one will have the title of mayor, all of their responsibilities are the same, so there is not going to be a difference in salary for, excuse me, for the mayor versus the other councilor.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Ms. Ruff?
Thank you. If I could direct everybody to Section 303, which is Page 3 of 29, on the, the larger Charter Amendment that addresses most issues. You'll see that the salary issue is addressed there.
Okay, so we have, sure, you'll have to help me out, because we have, what, one? Three documents online, I think there are.
So what, what it will say, or what it does say is that each council member shall receive an annual salary, which shall be equal for all council members, and shall be specified from time to time by an ordinance passed by the council in regular course of business. Provided, however, that the salary specified at the time of any council member takes office shall not be changed during the term for which they were elected. None of that is proposed to be changed. That all remains the same. The ordinance making any change, either by way of increase or decrease, shall be finally ordained prior to the election of the members to whom the salary increase shall apply. So again, that's what you currently have, and that is not proposed to be changed. The only addition that we are proposing to that section at all is that council members are entitled to receive such other benefits as may be authorized by ordinance. So the procedure to increase or decrease is the same, and you could take that step now by ordinance without the Charter Amendment that's before you.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions? Comments? I want to give ample time. This work session. Mayor Cross.
Okay, in accordance to the last-passed budget, it's eighty-four hundred for the mayor's budget. And just for the record, I think that this is an atrocious attack on democracy. You guys have heard from citizens October 20th of 2022. You have not bring this back to the citizens. We barely have even a thumbnail of citizens less than 1.00001% of the city on this call. So what you're doing is an abject, obnoxious act, and I really wish that, you know, you would find another alternative than just a hostile take of the government. But I understand this is where you want to go. Ms. Ruff, for all that you have done, I will say thank you. You seem to be an expert in what you do. But this is definitely something that the citizens of Glen Arden, as a whole, the eleven hundred that voted, have not been respected. But I do, I will tell you that it is eighty-four hundred, and you passed that in this FY25 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Sorry. If, if I could ask Ms. Ruff to please articulate what the state-required process is for amending a charter?
Well, yes. So it is set forth in state law exactly the process for amending the Charter, and it's in the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland. And what it requires is if the legislative body is going to be introducing it, which is what the situation is here, they can initiate the amendment to the Charter by a resolution that, except as is set forth in state law, is adopted in the same manner as other resolutions of the municipality by a majority of all the individuals elected to the legislative body. So before, state law also requires that before you adopt the resolution initiating the change by Charter Amendment, that you hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment, and that you are required to give at least 21 days' advance notice of that public hearing. Then, after you have adopted the Charter Amendment, there are requirements for giving notice that the resolution has been adopted by posting a copy of the resolution for 40 days after it's adopted, publishing a fair summary of the proposed amendment in a newspaper of general circulation in this, in the city at least four times at weekly intervals, and within that 40 days after the resolution is adopted. There is an alternative to that method, which is to publish a fair summary of the proposed amendment in a newspaper at least once, and then deliver a copy of a fair summary of the proposed Charter Amendment either by hand or mail to every residence in the municipality. And then there's a little bit more in there that tells you how you would go about doing that. And then it becomes, the Charter Amendment will become effective on the 50th day if a, or should I say, unless a petition for referendum is filed within that 40 days, that in the, the referendum petition has to meet the requirements of that state law as well, which again is in the local government article of the annotated code at Section 4304.
Thank you, Ms. Ruff. Just a follow-up question. Based on where we are in the process, have we skipped over the portions of the process that require public notification and public comment?
No, you, you still must. However, you would normally do your resolutions, is how you're supposed to, to do your Charter Amendment resolution, which you've done several, so you're familiar with that process and how you do that. But it's really important that you have that 21 days' notice of that public hearing prior to holding that.
Right. And in this case, we're having a work session for the resolution that will be the resolution that is being put forth for citizens to provide public comment on. So, so we have not actually passed this resolution yet, which will be in the coming steps, but at this point of the process, we have not violated the state law as it relates to the requirements for a Charter Amendment process.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say, send a thanks out to the Chair of the Charter Review Committee and the committee itself, thanking them for their diligent work in this effort. And I want to thank Attorney Ruff, as she is an expert at what she does. And I think that the committee has followed every, dotted every i and crossed every t concerning this, and we will, as a council, I believe that they will continue to do that, that this will be presented to the, to the, to the public. To the public. And, uh, anyway, I just wanted to say thank you. I don't understand why, when I come on board, I'm always getting noise issues. But, you know, it'll all come out in the end. This too shall pass. Thank you, Council President. Ms. Ruff, thank you, and Councilwoman Fareed, Councilwoman Ferguson, and the rest of the council members that participated in the Charter Review. Thank you so much. I appreciate it as a citizen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. If I may also just add a footnote here that every Charter Review Committee meeting was held publicly. It was advertised to the citizens, and citizens were able to participate and listen in on the discussions that we had during those working meetings.
Yes.
May I? I can't find my button. Can you hear me?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I found you. It's a lot of background noise, though.
I'm so sorry. Let me try to get somewhere. Hold on.
As, as we wait for Councilwoman Guillaume. Yeah, I just want to echo. There we go.
Is it better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so very much. I just wanted to basically piggyback off of where I believe it was Councilwoman Jones left off. I wanted to personally also thank, personally and publicly thank the committee, from the Chair to the committee members, Council Vice President Ferguson and Councilman Herring, because you all had to, I know it was a lot of work, and you all had to endure a lot of sometimes inflammatory comments or allegations, and you guys stood against everything and stood firm, and with the support and expertise of Attorney Ruff, we have gotten to this point. So I wanted to, again, publicly and personally thank all of you. And I also would like to say that there are citizens on this call, so I don't know whether comment was made about there were no citizens on this call, because I, I see citizens on this call. But again, thank you so much for all the work that you have put in.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume. All right, are there any other comments, questions related to the Charter Amendments that have been brought forth? I know the biggest component is the switch in government, which you know, there's, there's been some highlighting of how this current form of government, the, the mayor's not part of the governing body of the city of Glen Arden. And I view that as a, as an atrocity and travesty, that the mayor cannot participate in, in governing the city of Glen Arden, adding to the legislation and having a voice in this legislation, which these amendments, a part of this amendment does, it actually brings the mayor in the fold to have voting power in the city of Glen Arden. And so I'm excited for that. I think that historically, it's been a clash between the council and the, and the executive office by us absorbing the mayor into the governing body. I think that's going to be huge for the city of Glen Arden to work collaboratively, to advance just the different laws and policies that will help grow the, the city of Glen Arden. So I'm, I'm excited for that piece. But is there anything else, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, I was just going to add to that, because I think that's been the biggest piece of misinformation that has been floating around about what the changes we've made have been. If we look at the summation of the mayor's responsibilities with our current structure and with the proposed structure afterward, the mayor's role is actually significantly more influential than it was previously. The current mayor has the ceremonial responsibilities. The mayor in the future state will still have those ceremonial responsibilities. The current mayor does not have the ability to introduce legislation or vote on legislation. The current mayor has the opportunity to veto legislation. In the new structure, the mayor will be able to introduce legislation as well as vote on legislation, and will also preside over all meetings. So essentially, the mayor in the new structure has absorbed the responsibilities of the council president. Now also has responsibilities around legislative duties, and still retains the ceremonial rights and responsibilities, will still be the key point of contact for any county-state, et cetera, communications. So this role is significantly more expanded. The powers that the current mayor has, or the current role of the mayor has that will be taken away is the ability to veto, which in honesty is ineffective, because if the mayor currently vetoes something, but the, the council had passed it unanimously, it is unlikely that that veto will not be overturned. The other responsibility that the mayor, the role of the mayor currently has is to prepare the budget message, and that is not something that the mayor will do going forward in this different structure. It will be the city manager that will prepare the budget message, but as it is now, the council is the one that will approve the budget. So the, again, the mayor's role and responsibility in this new structure of government is broader, more influential, and more impactful, and we believe that by doing this, we can eliminate some of the some of the tension that has existed between the council and the mayor in many previous administrations, and also be more clear around responsibilities of the person who was in the role every day, meaning the chief administrative officer, the city manager. So again, citizens, the role of the mayor is more powerful in this new form of government than it is currently. We are not looking to remove the role of the mayor altogether. There is still someone who will have that title. And again, this person will be able to speak in meetings. This person will in fact preside over the meetings, which is not currently the case. So I hope that clarifies for people what we've done. Please have a review of the proposed Charter Amendment. And if you have any questions, ask those who are knowledgeable about what is in this document. Thank you so much for everyone's support and encouragement throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I encourage everyone to just read through it. Take your time. Next step says we have to, I, I want to make sure we abide by the, the proper protocol that Ms. Ruff has outlined. And so this is, seems to be the last work session of many work sessions that have already taken place for this. And the next steps will be to advertise, I believe, if you correct me wrong, Councilwoman Fareed, to advertise a public hearing for 21 days so that we can hear public comment, give, let this sit with citizens so they can read through it, try to understand it, and then come voice their opinions on it. So that is the next step, correct?
So, because part of the requirement from the state is that we would pass the resolution as we do any other, we will have a public hearing, and then we will, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Ruff, I know sometimes I get this confused, but I believe the next step is that we will have a public hearing, so on our, the Tuesday public hearing, we will hear comments. We will, and that's our, the city of Glen Arden's regularly scheduled public hearing that we have. And then we will have a vote on the resolution as we would do any other resolution. Then there is a period of comment. And then after that period of comment, we will adopt the resolution, and then after that, there is a period of time at which citizens can referendum the resolution before it's adopted. Am I correct on that, Mrs. Ruff?
So, if you have an additional step with a public hearing, but you, it's very critical that we have that 21 days' public notice of the public hearing, and I can work with your clerk to make sure that we set forth the, the timeline and get that established.
Okay, so it will be that we advertise a public hearing 21 days in advance and advertise accordingly, right?
So what I just described was, was, and like Ms. Ruff is inferring that I've added an extra public hearing, right? Because we have our standard public hearing in which we have legislation that we hear from. This one that is required by the state is the one that is the 21-day notice. And Ms. Ruff, does that, that is what happened? So after we pass the resolutions, assuming we would pass the resolution, then we have to give a 21-day notice for a public hearing?
So you have a public hearing before you pass the legislation?
Okay.
Okay, and then after that, you have the 40-day period where you advertise and post, and that's the time within which people can file a petition for referendum in accordance with law. Nobody does. On the 50th day, it becomes ineffective.
So when do we vote on it? After the 21-day period for, of the public hearing?
After the public hearing, yes.
How many days after the public hearing?
Well, that would be in accordance with your normal procedures.
Okay, so it's.
Right, this is something we've gone around about with respect to how the, the city does resolutions, so. So my understanding from the process that you had outlined in prior meetings is that we will have the 21-day notice, have the public hearing, and then you, under your rules, do not act on it the same night as the public hearing, but rather you would adopt it at the following meeting. Is that correct?
Six days.
Correct.
Six days after the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, we do have a timeline that we put together, so sorry about that, and Ms. Ruff will share that with the council clerk so that it can be published, so everyone's aware of when these activities will take place.
Okay, so we'll start out with the public, with public clerk, with the council clerk and also the council members. And is there any particular advertising or special advertising for that public hearing? Or is this just regular?
So that the 21-days' advanced notice of the public hearing, it, I'm looking right now to see if it says. It does not say. It says before adopting the resolution, the legislative body shall hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment and give at least 21 days' advance notice of the public hearing. Unlike when you give notice later after you've adopted it, it specifically says you have to publish a fair summary in a newspaper of general circulation at least four times.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so we'll share that timeline with the council clerk, and then We'll share that timeline with the council clerk and then we'll advertise accordingly. Um, want to make sure as, uh, many citizens can get it as possible, uh, so they can be informed. Uh, and we can go from there. Are there any other comments, questions? Any final comments from any members of the committee or Ms. Ruff?
No.
Okay. Uh, uh. Committee Chair Fareed, do you have any final comments?
No, thank you.
Uh, committee member, Vice President Ferguson, do you have any comments? Oh. I don't think so. All right, well, we're hearing none.
Oh, I did say something.
Oh, okay.
I was, I was muted. I was trying to, I was saying, I was thanking, um, Ms. Ruff for her diligence and her patience with, working with us and. Um. Councilwoman Fareed did an excellent job and also Councilman Herring, and thank my colleagues for the gracious compliments. Um, it was tedious, but, um, we're getting there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, with that, uh, our next meeting will be on. Tuesday, which will be our regular public hearing. Please come out. Um, and the time is seven thirty-four. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.